Good morning. I'd like to call to order the September 18th Commission Conference of the year 2025 in preparation for our September 22nd regular meeting. Before I call our prepared presentation, do we have any other speakers?
No one except our scheduled speaker.
At this time, I'd like to call Turk Schlesinger, CEO of Alterpoint Health, to give us an update on the hospital expansion.
Hello, Commissioners. I did not know I was going to be first, but that was great. Thank you. I was just coming actually to give you all an update on where we are with our hospital expansion at Bay Point. Let me set a couple of these up here. First, I'll let you guys see out here. But here is the current facility. And Commissioner, you remember that I think we had 104 beds at the time, and now we're moving it to 138.
Right.
This is some of the construction that's going on right now. And we had $6 million that we put into it with you guys. The total cost is 15 million. So do you remember us going through that process?
Oh, yeah.
And I think that was pre-COVID that that happened. And but anyway, so we have a new total of 15 million, and we're planning on borrowing that money right now. Look at my notes here. The new expansion will add adults to our facility. And currently, we have the Mobile Probate Court that is already occupying our facility. So we have adults already. The project is on track to be completed in May of 2026. Okay?
That was going to be my question.
Is that right? So one of the achievements that we're having here is to bring adults to this side of the bay. Baldwin County is wanting us to move children also to their side of the bay. So we're also expanding beds over there for kids. Some other initiatives that we have going on right now are some additional residential beds for children and adolescents in our Bay Point facility also. So I know there seems to be a continued shortage there for that, too. We probably have already exhausted our ARPA funding for the area. But if there is any extra funding available for this project, we would appreciate it. Is there any questions at all that you all have?
Just a comment. You know, this fills a tremendous need in our community. I was shocked to find out that we only had capacity, big capacity, for voluntary commitments for juveniles and geriatrics, but really nothing for the age group, adult age group in between until because everything else is basically closed. And so and to be able to have this facility right here within our community, within Mobile County, is a lot. So people don't have to, when they need those services, they don't have to go out of county and out of state. And that's a big deal. We need to be able to provide these type of mental health services within our community for people who need it.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we had talked about in Mobile, in the whole southwest Alabama area is that over 277 psychiatric beds have closed through the acute care hospitals. And I think it's just something that the public just doesn't know that we have no hospitals in our entire region that take adults. And so, of course, in 2002, we opened up the Bay Point facility. And in 2012, we opened up the East Point facility over in Daphne. And without those two psychiatric hospitals, we would actually have no capacity at all for adults or children. And so these two hospitals have been instrumental in trying for us to continue to move forward in the areas of psychiatry.
Well, we are certainly grateful for the partnership and the ability to use a portion of the ARPA funding to support this, working in partnership in the community. And it looks, and you said May of 2026, so it's really moving along pretty well at this point.
I do want to mention that we certainly are appreciating the partnership that we've got with Mobile County Probate Court. You know, working with the probate judge, the new Mark Irwin probate judge has been fantastic. And we're doing a tremendous amount together to help the people in Mobile County actually be served in Mobile County. Also, we're pretty excited about Judge Pipe's new initiative for mental health. And we want to be an instrumental part of all of that also. We have a new conference that's coming up here pretty soon that we'll all be at to discuss possibilities of where Mobile can go with mental health treatment.
I'm definitely planning to be there. And just thank you. Thank you to you and your team and for all the work that you do. It's just been tremendous.
You're welcome.
Benefit to the community.
One other quick note. Alterpoint is one of two CCBHCs in the state. They're called Certified Community Behavioral Health Centers. We're one in Wellstone and Huntsville is one. Gives us the capacity to look at better access to care for people on an outpatient basis. I do want to let you know that we are expanding our services on the outpatient side to Citronell. We're also looking right now at expanding into Saraland. Of course, we've already expanded into the biolebatory area that we have down there. We have new locations in West Mobile at the Providence Hospital area. We have a new location on Highway 90 West also. So we're really trying to get where the patients are. Okay?
Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here today.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dooley, did you? Thank you. Mr. Kerr?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ask you to consider the following. Adopt Mobile County budget for fiscal year 25-26. Two, approve a list of claims. Three, hold public hearings so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report. Four, approve appropriation contract with the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 Education Funds for its "Our City, Our Future" telethon. Five, approve appropriation contract with Sims Youth Football in the amount of $5,310 from District 2 Education Funds for a football scoreboard. Six, approve appropriation contract with Dedicated Dentists in the amount of $5,000 for its free dental day on October 11th with funds divided as follows. Seven, approve appropriation contract with Fostering Together Gulf Coast in the total amount of $5,000 for its Fostering Hope Gala on October 16th with funds divided as follows. Eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Sims Women's Club in the amount of $500 from District 2 Education Funds for its Christmas Tour and Shop Hop event on December 13th. Nine, approve appropriation contract with Southwest Mobile County Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $6,000 from District 3 Education Funds for its Tillman's Corner Area Learning Leadership Program. Ten, approve professional services contract with Peter Rosten in the amount of $88,000 to provide computer networking and informational technology services at Strickland Youth Center. Eleven, we will revise the funding as follows. Approve appropriation contract with Moa Band of Choctaw Indians in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 Education Funds and from District 3 Education Funds. That split will be 50% each for its annual powwow on October 3rd through October 4th. Twelve, approve professional services agreement with Airwind in the amount not to exceed $28,000 for updating various training videos and public service announcements in preparation for the '26 election cycle to be paid as follows. Thirteen, approve renewal of subrecipient agreement with Goodwill Easter Seals of the Gulf Coast for a Project Mobile County Recycle Center program in an amount not to exceed $187,500.
Correction on that one. Goodwill is no longer affiliated with Easter Seals. It should be Goodwill Industries of the Gulf Coast.
Yes, ma'am, we'll make that change. Fourteen, approve change order number one with Team Craft Roofing for project roof maintenance or replacement for various county facilities. The change order will decrease the contract amount by $77,443, and the new contract will be in the total amount of $7,370,907.
Question. This is only Government Plaza roof? Are there any others included in this? Okay. When does that work? When would it begin?
That's already been completed.
Okay, so. Okay. Well, I knew they had done work, but I didn't realize that they had completed everything at this point. I know they're not working on my side of the building anymore.
Why does the agenda item say various county facilities instead of Government Plaza?
The original project was for multiple buildings.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Fifteen, approve hold harmless indemnity agreement for use of Choctaw equipment, excuse me, for use of county equipment for the Moa Band of Choctaw Indians. Sixteen, we're going to ask to be voted at conference. Accept grant award from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $1,608,060 with no local match, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute all documents.
So moved.
Gordon, are there, I guess the same question for number 16 and 17. Are there any specifics on the grants and what they're for?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, sir. We have a plan on the county website with the list of projects and activities that we're doing. These are the ones that we had approved previously this year, and this is now the grant agreement coming through for those.
Thank you. Second.
So this is the grant that we normally receive around June. It's just later this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Seventeen, we will also ask to be voted at conference. Accept grant award from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Home Program in the amount of $574,405.14 with a 25% in-kind or cash match, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute all documents.
So moved.
Second.
Eighteen, adopt resolution authorizing request of Revenue Commission to dispose of certain items at the Michael Square Shopping Center from the fixed assets inventory list and declare a surplus property and authorize the items to be disposed of by lawful means. Nineteen, approve amendment number three to the existing professional services contract with Herschek and Webster Creative Professionals to add Escatafa Hollow Park, Park and Campground, Blackwater River, Interpretive Center, Exhibit Design, and Content Development and Layout to be paid from the Forever Wild Land Trust Fund. Twenty, approve grant amendment with the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for the Alabama Recycling Fund Grant to extend the period of performance to March 31st, 2026. Twenty-one, approve sponsorship agreement with hand-up charities in the total amount of $1,000 for its charity golf tournament on October 11th with funds divided as follows. Twenty-two, approve revising the resolution of the Mobile County Commission Conference and Meeting Schedule as follows to cancel the conference on October 9th and hold a combined conference and meeting on October 14th at 9:00 a.m. Twenty-three, we ask to be voted at conference. Accept as complete the application for a solid waste facility permit modification for a proposed increase in the maximum daily volume of waste allowed and an expansion of the service area from the Solid Waste Disposal Authority of the City of Mobile for the Chastain landfill and authorize all public notices as required by Alabama Code.
Before we vote, Tina, could you explain the process? What happens now? What this does and what happens from here?
So the Code of Alabama and A.D.M. establishes a process for owners of new and existing landfills to follow to get local approval before they get a permit. And so this is basically the beginning of that process where we have worked with Waste Management and the City of Mobile Solid Waste Disposal Authority to get their application filled out. Where we, with staff, agrees that it's complete, we bring it to you. And after you vote today, we begin the public engagement process and the evaluation process based on the criteria established in the Code of Alabama. So we'll have notices go out. Public notices will be placed in the paper by the county next week. And then the applicant Waste Management is going to host a public awareness session in the community on their behalf. So we'll open up public comments, and they will close on November 10th at the public hearing where the Commission will give the public an opportunity to speak. We'll collect written comments, verbal comments. And then we'll come back to you after that public hearing with our evaluation based on the six criteria. And it will be up to the Commission to vote whether to grant that permit, local approval for that permit modification within 30 days after the public hearing.
So what is the projected public hearing date?
November 10.
And then the Commission must act within 30 days of November 10.
Yes, ma'am.
Tina, can we be very clear to the public what we're doing here? Because Waste Management is handling the City of Mobile's trash household garbage service, correct?
Yes, sir.
And what they're wanting to do is expand this to where they can bring other people's household garbage from other counties, possibly other states, and dump them in Mobile County. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. No. Didn't you ask for that to be voted today?
I asked for the application to be considered complete. The Commission's not voting on the request.
Yes, my vote is no to begin the process.
Okay. So once this is, once the application is complete, then basically our obligation at the county is to certify that so the process can move forward?
Yes. Excuse me. So the application is, the staff considers the application complete. The staff has not evaluated the content of the application and does not today have a recommendation on whether or not it should be, local approval should be granted. The staff will continue to evaluate those six criteria and receive and collect and catalog and report back to you on the public comments on that application.
So this just gets it to the point where you can have those public comments.
Are we obligated by law to accept their application?
Yes, to consider it, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I still stand behind my vote. I vote no.
You want to make the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, approve annual work order to furnish labor, equipment, and materials as needed for fiscal year 25-26 as follows. Twenty-five, approve renewal of 12-month professional services contract with Content Fresh for social media consulting management and Mobile County's community calendar research content development. Twenty-six, adopt resolution authorizing request of Probate Court to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus property, and donate miscellaneous election-related supplies, including PPE materials, pens, highlighters, markers, and tape that were returned from precincts after previous elections to local school systems, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means. Twenty-seven, adopt resolution authorizing request of Probate Court to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means, and authorize pursuant to Alabama Department of Public Examiners minimum accounting requirements for the Office of the Judge of Probate that the proceeds from the sale of those certain items from fixed assets inventories be held separately by designated fund and remitted directly to Probate Court to be deposited in the Court's Special Recording Fee Fund account from which the equipment was purchased. Twenty-eight, adopt resolution authorizing request of Probate Court to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus, and authorize disposal by lawful means, and authorize pursuant to Alabama Department of Public Examiners minimum accounting requirements for the Office of Judge of Probate that the proceeds from the sale of those inventory items from fixed assets inventory be held separately by designated fund and deposited in the bank account of the fund from which the equipment was purchased. Nine, approve service agreement with Unity Fiber to provide an emergency phone line for the elevator at Escatafa Hollow Park and Campground Restaurant Building located on Moffett Road in Wilmer. Monthly recurring cost of $75 for a 36-month term and a one-time charge of $10,540. Thirty, adopt resolution expressing Mobile County Commission's opposition to any legislative changes that would disrupt the Simplified Sellers Use Act program's operation or call the program's constitutionality into question. Thirty-one, consider taking the following bids. And Commissioners want to make sure that this morning, we had some change. The bids run out that was available this morning has the, to those. That was not on there. That's not listed on the agenda, and that bid will be for awarding bid number 144-25, three-month OEM printer and fax supplies for the County Commission to Alinsky Brothers and Sprott Printer Ribbons. Item 32, approve Public Works project lighting upgrade for Grand Bay Library. In the, excuse me, that is a, that should be a building maintenance project. Approve a building maintenance project lighting upgrades for Grand Bay Library in the amount of $59,243.75. Thirty-three, approve renewal of software agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of $134,597.5 under the current State of Alabama agreement for Microsoft 365 volume licensing, client access license, and Windows Desktop for the County Commission. Thirty-four, approve renewal of support and maintenance agreement with Contact Innovations in the amount of $7,670 for IA Chek SE annual support and IA Chek recognition yearly license for the Revenue Commission. Thirty-five, approve software maintenance contract with Data Ventures in the amount of $20,738.15 for Laserfish system for the Sheriff's Office and the Metro Jail. Thirty-six, approve 36-month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation under the current State of Alabama contract for two Sharp copiers for a monthly cost of $158.02 each for the Public Works Department. Thirty-seven, approve preliminary resolution authorizing 2025 Go Mesa capital projects for the issuance of limited obligation warrants in an aggregate principal amount not expected to exceed $35 million for various capital improvements pending legal review.
I want to, I'm really not completely prepared to speak about item number 37, but I'm going to speak a little bit about it, and I'll probably have some more information on Monday. I'm glad we're not voting because I don't really want to vote no on two things today. But this is the second time that the Go Mesa funding has been bonded by the Mobile County Commission. Once previously before I was elected, and I believe the Commissioner in District 3 voted no for this initial bond. Right now, we have already bonded 41% of the Go Mesa funding that comes to Mobile County. We've bonded it for 22-plus years. Could be more, could be less, depending on what the Go Mesa funding looks like coming in the future. And we're paying a 4% interest rate on that bond. What, you know, what does that look like? In 2021, Mobile County was, this is after the original bond. The Go Mesa distribution for Mobile County was $3.8 million. In exchange, because of the bond, we got $1.1 million. In 2022, the Go Mesa distribution was $3.6 million. We got $2.6 million. In 2023, the Go Mesa distribution was $5.2 million. We got $3.2. And this year, if I'm, if I think, I think this year, '24, which we'll get this year, was $5.2, and we got $3.2 million. And now we're looking to bond some more. I feel like I'm in a JP Wentworth TV commercial where they say, "It's my money, and I want it now." I just feel like this is a horrible idea. I wasn't here the last time, but I felt like it was a horrible idea then. The problem is that we're really hamstringing the future commission or the future commissioners, whoever may sit in this seat or either of these two seats. This funding will be bonded and spent. It has to be spent in 36 months. If I'm, somebody correct me if I'm incorrect. But once the bond takes place, that money has to be spent in 36 months. At the end of that 36 months, we'll all be here. But in sometime in the future, I will assume that none of the three of us will be here. And 22 years later, there will be a county commissioner sitting in these seats who won't have the opportunity to decide what they want to do with Go Mesa funding that should be distributed to the county once a year, not in some big lump sum for us to decide or anybody in the past or future to decide where that money goes. It should be the decision of whoever is elected at that time when that money comes in to decide where that money should be spent. So I just. So I just, I've been opposed to this since it first come to my attention that it was coming forward. And again, I'm glad we're not voting no, so I don't have to vote no on two items on the same agenda because I haven't done that since I've been here. But I think, I think that, and no offense to either of you, that you guys are entitled to your opinion, just like I am. This is just my opinion. I think we're making a horrible decision.
Commissioner, I'd have to respectfully disagree with you on that matter. There really is, we go to the bond market periodically, but we make sure that we manage our debt limit, and that's very important. We have set a policy in place to manage the debt limit. But there is no difference, no difference in bonding the Go Mesa money in terms of ability to get funding upfront to do projects that you wouldn't be able to do otherwise because you don't have the, you don't have the amount of money coming forward to do some of these projects if you just take it year by year, the way you're describing. But the general obligation warrants that we, and we're about to go to the bond market again on a general obligation warrant. There is no difference there. I mean, we're still paying two mil, we'll be paying about two million dollars a year in bond indebtedness, and that's taking money that any future, I mean, the payout on that, the amortization is twenty-five, thirty years. So it's the same, same situation. You know, if we don't ever bond any money at all, then we can't afford to do any big projects, golf courses and sportsplexes and things like that. We have to have that money upfront to be able to do it, and the payback is over a twenty-five-year period normally. And so this is the same situation with this Go Mesa money, in my opinion. Where it's going to allow us to get some things done while we can afford it, you know, as you wait to do these projects, the cost of them, they continue to skyrocket. So we want to be able to do them now when we, when they're still more affordable.
I just want to make sure, because I know Mr. Arthur Mack is here, and I want him to get it right. So when the commissioner is talking about, for one year, for example, we got three-point-eight million from the feds, and the county had access to one-point-one million. That one-point-one million was over and above amounts we had already received from the bond. So the Go Mesa bond is not taking away two-point-six million dollars. We got that in advance, and we're able to plan for projects. We can't, there's, I've never seen a project, the kind of projects that we do with Go Mesa that we've been able to do with a year. We always need one year, two year, three years' worth of funding to be able to complete it. So the difference in the amount we receive and the amount the county is able to use in that year is the debt service. And when we started this, it was because Go Mesa was imperiled. We didn't know whether Go Mesa was about to go away, and in order to make sure that we were able to collect our money and the investors in these Go Mesa bonds understand that if Go Mesa goes away, they're going to be left holding the bag, not us.
Not the county.
Yeah, it won't be us. And so we were just trying to move strategically to be able to move some of these big projects that we've been able to move that we would not have been able to do. And that, that was the thinking at the time that we did it, to be able to continue. And the other thing was to be able to leverage our restored dollars to leverage NIFW dollars, projects where we had a little bit of money that we, that was also Go Mesa eligible to do all of that, and then we were able to do more. So that made our other dollars with similar objectives as Go Mesa go further, and that's why.
And I, and I don't dispute that maybe the first time that the Go Mesa money was bonded, that there was some speculation under a previous administration in Washington, DC, that Go Mesa could go away, but I do believe now that it's this year, actually, that it was increased, and I think it's anticipated, I'm not going to, I don't know what our number would be in Mobile County, but I know that the state anticipates next year in April that they'll get an additional ten million dollars above what they got this year. So I would imagine that equates to between a million and two million dollars for Mobile County. I'm not sure what that number would look like. So I don't, I don't think we are in a situation anymore where there's a fear that the Go Mesa is going to be decreased. But to add to that, I think part of our bond obligation and the previous bond, and this is why I said I really wasn't completely prepared to speak about this today. It kind of got sprung on me at five o'clock yesterday that it would even be on the agenda because I've been, I've objected to this since the first time I've heard that we were thinking about it or that the commission was thinking about it. But I believe in our obligation to pay the bond back, if the, if the numbers are of a certain amount that we're obligated to pay even more, I think if it's above a certain amount, that certain amount above whatever that percentage is, is to be split fifty-fifty, where the half of that additional funding would go towards the debt service, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure how that completely works, just. So what I, I guess what I'm saying is now that there's been a, the cap has been increased, then we will not even see the new amount of money that's coming in on the, on the increase because fifty percent of that is obligated to go back to the bond.
I don't know what, I don't really know what you're talking about with that. Maybe that's something.
Well, that's just the, that's the way the bond's written. I mean, fifty, if there's, if there's an increase in the amount or if it reaches a certain amount, then whatever goes above that amount, the increase, fifty percent of it has to go towards the bond, and the other fifty percent comes to the county. It all comes to the county, but we have to obligate fifty percent of the increase above eighty, maybe it's above eighty-five percent. I'll have more information on Monday about that. That's why I said I'm really not prepared to speak about that today.
Next item. Do you have an add-on?
So we do have some potential add-ons for Monday that we're still getting details, but generally, I think we're considering a District Three Education Fund project for a golf charity event.
Maybe. For a charity golf tournament.
And we'll also have a item related to amending the funding sources for some District One education and district fund projects.
So what about the Jeremiah Denton item?
I think that's on K.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's some discussion that needs to come with that one.
All right.
Yeah, that is all.
You're done in this section.
Okay, item, item one, approve right-of-way and or easement agreement for tract seven on Mossaf Road in the amount of five hundred dollars for project Mossaf, Mossaf Road, Road Improvement Project.
Would you pull the microphone a little closer to?
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, better. Thank you.
Number two, approve right-of-way and or easement agreements for Lambert Cemetery Road in the total amount of twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars for project Lambert Cemetery Road and Bill Neighbors Road, gray drain basin paved, to be divided as follows. Number three, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the following property owners for the following projects. Number four, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segments of roads, and subdivisions. Number five, approve reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way with Alabama Power Company on Lambert Cemetery Road for project Lambert Cemetery Road, gray drain, Lambert Cemetery Road and Bill Neighbors Road, gray drain basin paved, in the total estimated amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Number six, approve reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way with Alabama Power Company on Bill Neighbors Road for project Lambert Cemetery Road and Bill Neighbors Road, gray drain basin paved, in the estimated cost of ninety-one thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Number seven, approve proposed and final plats of the following subdivisions. Maxwell Family Estates in District Three off Wheatcroft Drive East and South. Airbus subdivision District Three off Paget Switch Road. Morris Paradise in District Three off Baby Point Drive. Riverside resubdivision of lots one and two in District Three off Baby Point Drive. Resubdivision of lots eighteen and nineteen, Dees Plantation Phase Two in District Three off Orchard Lane East and South. Resubdivision of Lot Three, Mayherg Estate subdivision in District Two off Roberts Road, and Woodlands Edge subdivision in District Two off Howse Ferry Road. Number eight, approve proposed and final plot of lots one and two of Summer Glen's subdivision, Phase Two amended off Repole Road and Sable Ridge Drive in District Three. This proposed plats supersedes the previously submitted proposed and final plot that was approved by the commission on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and this is related to the developer needed to correct one of the signatures. Number nine, approve final plot of the Pines of Dawes and authorize the county engineer to sign the plot and to update the following street in the private road inventory. This street has been constructed to a paid private road standard and certified by the developer's professional engineer. Okay, if you will allow me, I'm going to skip ten and eleven for just a minute, and I'm going to go to twelve because they're related to the add-on that Commissioner Ledgood mentioned. Number twelve, approve supplemental agreement number five with Frank Turner Construction for the Tanner Williams Road from Snow Road North to Ziegler Boulevard Project for raising and changing inlets and removal of asphalt, increasing the contract by ten thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents to an estimated total cost of fourteen million seven hundred and six thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Okay, so going back to items ten and eleven, and there's also going to be an add-on that I'll get to in just a minute. These three are all related to the grants for the bulkhead replacement at Jeremiah Denton and the grants associated with that. We have, one phase of it is complete. A second phase has bid and construction is about to start, and the third phase will be what's upcoming in this next year. So ten, eleven, and the add-on are all related to these grants, and they kind of, they got out of order coming to us out of Washington, and they are on very, very short timelines. So I'm going to ask, if you will, to approve all three of these today at the conference, and if you have any questions, once I read through them, well, just let me know. Okay, number ten, approve the pre-application for federal assistance, ninety-five percent funding, and state assistance, two and a half percent funding for the Jeremiah Denton Airport for fiscal year twenty-six in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. This pre-application requests ninety-seven point five percent reimbursement for Mobile County Jeremiah Eight Denton Airport replacement of bulkhead, phase four construction, and that will be the final phase. Number eleven is accept airport improvement grant offer. Yes, ma'am?
We vote on ten first.
Batch them?
Yes, you can do them individually. That's fine.
Want me to do all three? She wants all three voted on today, right?
You can do them individually or collectively.
I'll make the motion to approve items ten, eleven, and twelve.
Ten, eleven.
Ten and eleven and an add-on.
I mean, and the add-on. I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. I assume you still want me to keep reading? Okay. This pre-application requests the ninety-seven percent reimbursement for Mobile County for the Jeremiah Denton Airport replacement of bulkhead, and that will be the final phase. Number eleven, accept airport improvement grant offer for Jeremiah Denton Airport bulkhead replacement, construction, administration, and oversight, and authorize a designated official representative of the Mobile County Commission to execute the grant offer and acceptance.
So can we vote it on ten, eleven, and the add-on?
Yes, ma'am.
We approved them already.
Okay. So I don't need to read them?
Nope.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We're confusing her, too.
Do you have anything else?
No, thank you very much for that.
All right. Anyone else? I guess not Anusha. She's tipping out.
I do have a few announcements, Commissioner.
All right, if nothing else.
I do. I have some.
Oh, you had something? Okay, I'm sorry.
I have like four things, and then I know Commissioner Dewitt has an announcement as well. So this weekend is an Operation Clean Sweep in Irvington. So Saturday, September twentieth, from seven AM to one-thirty PM at seven thousand one hundred and ninety-five Half Mile Road in Irvington. So this gives residents a chance to rid their homes of unwanted appliances, computers, printers, household items, yard debris, and much, much more. So please take advantage of that. It is free for Mobile County residents with proof of ID. Second, the Alabama Coastal Cleanup is Saturday this weekend, so it's a good chance to get out and help get the trash out of the splash in a collective effort. Third, we'd like to congratulate the commission and District One Commissioner Mercerie-Ledgood. Both were recently honored with Main Street Mobile's Excellence in the Public Realm Award. This was presented jointly with the City of Mobile for the city-county collaboration on the Isom Clement Civil Rights Memorial Park. This award celebrates transformational improvements to streets, sidewalks, parks, projects that enhance pedestrian safety, create more inviting living spaces, and strengthen economic vitality. Fourth, Mobile County Parks and Recreation will be participating in GND Farms Outdoor Expo this weekend at the grounds. So there'll be about seventy-five vendors and food trucks and a youth archery competition. I think Allentown Elementary is the lead on, on the archery competition. It's going to be a very exciting event, and if you're out there, stop by our Parks and Rec booth. And as always, we'd like to remind everyone to connect with Mobile County on social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, X, LinkedIn, Google, and YouTube, and I know Commissioner Dewitt has another announcement.
You ready? Okay. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize our golf pro, Shane Allen. He's here. Shane, you will stand up. And you can say a few words, if you like to, about this recognition that you received, but I just wanted to, Shane is a golf pro from Mobile County who has been named by Golf Digest, which is a nationwide magazine for golf pros, is one of the best teachers in the state of Alabama, I believe, number two, which makes him number one in Mobile County because I think the other is from Birmingham. So Golf Digest publishes a list every two years of the top pros across the country. Only seventeen golf instructors from the state of Alabama were recognized in this recognition. Alan, current, Alan, Shane Allen, he's currently serving as a golf pro for the Mobile County Commission, where he is currently overseeing construction of the new Cypress Creek Golf Course, which is expected to open this year. Shane has more than twenty years' experience managing golf operations, developing players, facility growth, and he's also earned repeated recognitions throughout his career, including the Gulf Coast Chapter Teacher of the Year twice. Is that correct? Twice? You know, I just wanted Shane to come down and just say that, you know, it's an honor to have you working for the county. I know that we interviewed lots of people, and we were glad to be able to find a local golf pro like yourself to be here, and it just shows that what an incredible asset you are to the community and to the Mobile County Commission. So congratulations, and thank you.
Shane, can you teach old people?
Are you, are you giving our instruction now? Do you, can you?
Our driving range is not quite ready. It is, all the grass is planted, everything, but we still have to give the grass time to grow in. So right now, after I get off work, I'm teaching at Hair and Lakes.
Okay, I was just wondering if you were teaching somewhere else.
Not yet, no, ma'am, but that should be coming hopefully before the end of the fall.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm, no, not of you, Shane. I'm assuming that before our meeting next week, we'll, on Monday, we'll have a presentation of the budget?
Yes, we will. There'll be a presentation.
Yes, we will. There'll be a presentation at Monday's meeting at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Jeff, you got anything more to say?